Gary DeRoche, 45 Day Road, application for a special permit to construct a 16-foot by 30-foot garage within the side setback. So I believe, Holly, that is you?
Yes, that's me. Hello, everybody.
Okay, so tell us about your project. Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, the board is Will, Trevor, Mick, Manny, and Sharon.
Okay. So, as it's fairly simple, as Gary DeRoche is looking to do, he wants to put a one-car garage on his property. The only real location to be able to do it is in the location that has been specked out on your plans. We understand that this is not within the setbacks that are required at this time. I have looked under the bylaws and the zoning board bylaws and I believe 6.1.5.2B. It states if the structure after the alteration will continue not to conform, the zoning board of appeals can issue a special permit after determining the alteration is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing non-conforming use. It, and in our opinion, it's certainly not detrimental to the neighborhood. I believe you might even have a letter or two from a couple of the neighbors saying that they don't have any issue with this building. So we are hoping that you will grant a special permit.
Thank you. And Chris, do we have any letters?
If they came in and would have done today and I didn't check my email today.
Right. I have not gotten anything either.
Yeah, I didn't receive anything.
Okay. I had not, I mean, I had talked to Mrs. Barnhouse who lives next door, and she had mentioned that she wrote a letter, but obviously I have no idea whether she knows how to email it or how it may have gotten or not gotten to you, so.
All right. Thank you. All right, Mick, I'm gonna start with you.
Yeah, I got no questions.
Okay, Trevor.
Um, I don't have any questions, but I'm not sure that I am in support of this at the moment.
Okay.
Existing house is conforming with regards to all four setbacks. And this would be creating a significant new non-conformity where none currently exists. We've dealt with this before and the answer we usually give, I think, is that you don't get to, you don't get to create a new non-conformity just because you want to have a garage. So, I don't, I don't know that I'd be in support of it at this moment, but I don't have any questions.
Okay, Manny?
Um, I would think the lot would be non-conforming, and it doesn't have the frontage. But anyway, it is right into the setback and I would think you would do your best to have as much room between the garage and the property line. Seems to me that the garage could go against the house. I know there's a door there, but at least it would push it that much more away from the sideline. I would be more in favor of something like that.
Okay.
You mean attaching it to the house?
Yes. I know there's a door there, and I've come up with doorstep problems before. Because the door is there, I suppose they just wanted room to leave the landing and don't attach the garage.
Right.
Okay, Will?
I have plenty to say, but I have no questions.
Okay, Janet.
I agree with everything that Trevor and Manny just said. I was just, my only question is, I was looking to see what the lot coverage was going to be with the proposed garage, and I couldn't find it. I don't know that you're over the 15%, but I was just curious what that was gonna be.
It is under that. I'm sorry, I don't have that right in front of me. I did, it was on the paperwork that I was asked to submit.
I didn't, I just couldn't find it.
I don't, I don't see it either, actually.
It's on the plan.
Okay. Andy?
No, no, I don't have any questions. I, I am, well, I guess I do have a question. As far as the frontage is concerned, I know it's 130 now, but at that time, what was it? When the subdivision was created?
65, I think.
65 feet was the?
No, I mean, it was 1965, I believe, was when it was created.
I do have that information. I found that the existing coverage without the garage is 7% of the property, and it would be 11% with the garage.
Thank you.
Okay. So your question is, when was the house, when was that subdivision created? I believe it, the house says, the assessor's card says 1965.
Really is, is it, is it a non-conforming now?
Ah, yes, I don't know.
Obviously, now, today it is, but the question is.
That's right. Right. It's pre-existing non-conforming. Yep. Did you get an answer, Andy? I'm not sure you did.
I did not.
No.
That's my question.
So your question is, is the frontage non-conforming?
Correct. It is today.
It is today. Right. Was it in 1965? I don't know.
Okay.
Rita?
I agree with the issue of the setback. I think it does, it really is a non-conformity increases it quite a bit.
Okay. All right, I think that, does anyone else have any questions before the board wants to talk about this at all? All right, so Will, I'm back to you then.
Well, Madam Sharon, maybe we should ask if there's not many people out there, but does anyone else have a comment that would like to speak before?
Okay.
Before we,
We speak, I don't.
Talk amongst ourselves.
Does anyone in the audience want to speak to this? It would appear not. We have 16, we have 16 participants, so I can see them all on the screen here, and I see no hands. I see nothing waving.
Okay, then I'll start in. I mean, I drove all around the neighborhood, and there's a lot, and then, and also by looking at the tax map, you can see there's all, these are all very small lots, and very few of them have garages. And the only structures that appear to have garages, for the most part, were built on houses that were even smaller than this. And I think for us to grant the special exception in this case would, you might as well just do away with the setback requirement. Everyone had had a garage, we'd look more like Somerville than we do Welfley. And I know early on, I was, when I first moved into town, a year, years ago, before I was even a resident, I was reminded by a, by a native here in town that no one in Welfley just builds a garage. You have a garage goes up, and it's not an hour when there's not a bedroom in there and the lights are on all night long. It just doesn't happen. Now, I don't think that's relevant to our, our, our view of this, but I think it's just a fact of life in Welfley, and I think to, to, to grant this special permit would really fundamentally change the nature of the, of the, of the neighborhood. And that's it.
All right, Mick, I'm gonna come back to you, since you didn't get a chance to talk before.
Yeah. I'm not in favor of creating a non-conformity where one doesn't exist. And along that road, this was built way back in the day, and they're just all these cute little cottages. So I can see why he would like a garage, but it's creating a huge non-conformity where one doesn't exist right now, and I wouldn't be in favor of that. That's it.
Okay, and I think Trevor has already weighed in on this. I think what you're gonna hear, what you're hearing here is that this board is, doesn't usually create non-conformities, and particularly not in the case of something like a garage. And we've turned down a number of, of these kinds of requests where the house is right now conforming, and then we'd be creating a new non-conformity. So that's, I think, sort of where we are on this one.
If, if the homeowner was to entertain attaching it to the house, is, would that still be essentially denied as well, or?
Given the size of the garage, my sense is yes, but I'll let other people weigh in on that. Trevor?
Well, I don't, in my opinion, it doesn't change anything. I mean, unless the garage is five feet wide, it's still gonna, it's still gonna go into the side setback.
Right. Yeah.
Yeah, I, I did notice driving around, there were some houses that have structures directly behind the house. I don't know what your measurements are there, but it may not be very, very attractive, and for a lot of other reasons, you might not want to put it there, but and I don't even know if you could, but I did note that driving down these various roads with these small lots, there were structures behind houses. But, but no, it wouldn't have changed my mind.
Nick?
Yeah. Again, it's, it's a, it's a large non-conformity. It'd be different if we're only talking about a couple of feet, but it's not substantial, so I don't see how attaching it to the house would change much for me.
Right. So, so I think we're at the point where my sense of the board is that they're going to deny this. In that case, you have the option of withdrawing without prejudice if you'd rather not have a denial on the books.
Okay, I guess we'll do that, and then I'll talk to the homeowner about that.
Okay. All right. So then I need a motion to allow her to withdraw without prejudice?
I'll make a motion to allow the case to be withdrawn without prejudice.
Okay, I need a second. Trevor has seconded, and I need a roll call vote, which is Trevor.
Aye.
Will?
Aye.
Manny?
Aye.
Nick?
Aye.
And Sharon?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, all right, sure. Okay. Minute to switch gears, and we'll go to 2112 Jay Rosenbaum, 102nd Avenue. Application for a special permit to alter a pre-existing non-conforming structure by adding a second floor. And the board will be, Janet, did you get to go out there?
Yes.
Okay, good. Then I'm gonna put you on this board and not me. So the board will be Will, and Trevor, and Mick, and Manny, and Jan. I'll still, I'll still play traffic cop, but I won't vote. And I have to find, yeah, so. Okay, Ben, you're on.
Okay, thank you, Madam Sharon. Hello, everybody. Again, this is Ben Zender, and, and with me on the line is Jay Rosenbaum, who, who with his wife purchased the property several years ago. Jay is also an attorney and probably one of the nicest people I've ever met. If that's relevant in your determination at all.
You wanted him to smile, so you said that.
I've never said that before. I've never said that before, because.
No, you haven't.
I have. And Jay is wonderful, but he's here to answer any factual questions about the property that hopefully I can't answer. You, those of you that have been out to the site, you'll know this is a, it's sort of at the ends of the earth, out on the, on the western shore of Lieutenant Island, and, and when Jay and his wife bought the house, it had been owned by somebody who just hadn't really maintained it appropriately. It needed a lot of work, and so they, they kind of sat back and tried to figure out what to do with it. The house is sandwiched between a coastal bank, a revetted coastal bank, and it's right up against the road. You'll see from the site plan that the deck actually encroaches a little bit into the road. The house itself is about 2.6 feet from the road. But what they've done is they've designed a program where they're leaving, they're keeping the existing structure as it is without touching it. There's a lower level and a first level. They're not changing those, but what they're doing is they're putting a, another living level on top of that. That, so they're keeping the exact configuration of the house. It's not changing. The setbacks aren't changing. It's non-conforming on the north side, the east side. You know, significantly, the height of the existing house right now is 19.1 feet above existing grade. They're gonna go to 28.4, so it's, it's a raise, it's a raise of about 9.3 feet. Still would be, still would be within the, I believe, actually, I think it's, I'm gonna go and check that number again. I think it's, it's within the height requirement. Lot area of the house, 7.1% of the lot. If you just take the lot above the coastal bank, it's, it's 9.4%, so it's relatively low lot coverage. And, and the, each of the stories is approximately 966 square feet. We went in front of the conservation commission on March 3rd, received approval. The one issue that the conservation commission really wrestled with, in addition to just general mitigation strategies and replanting and how you manage a project of this type, was one of the things that Jay's proposing to do is to provide some fill on the north side of the property, remove some decking and provide some fill on that side. And the purpose of that fill is that, as you're aware as a board, that you can't have a three-story house in town of Welfley. And what dictates whether a basement is a story is whether the, is whether, you know, a certain percentage of the basement is exposed above ground. And so in order to meet the metric of making sure that the basement level is not a story, they're, they're placing some fill and regrading and replanting and removing some decking on the north side so that they will comply with the zoning bylaw requirements of not having that lower level be a basement. Other than that small twist in the presentation, you know, this is a, a pretty, not common, but it's what this board sees. It's the only way you can go to, to get some additional area of your house is to go up within the existing footprint of the house, maintaining the footprint, maintaining the decks, except for removing about 180 square feet of decks on the north side and a little bit on the, on the southwest side. And other than that, the house is staying exactly where it is, and we're hoping that the board finds that it, that it's appropriate, and that it meets your requirements for a special permit. Additionally, technically, the property's in a floodplain, flood zone, although it's, the level is raised up. I can't see that it would in any way be impacted by a flood event. But because it is technically within the, the delineated flood area, it also needs your typical flood exemption permit as well that you see oftentimes in waterfront applications. So, and the fact that it's already received the, the conservation commission approval, and it's, it's, you know, so far above, you know, flood, flood heights, we're hoping the board will grant that permit as well. So that's essentially my presentation. You know, I'll answer any questions that you have, and, and thank you.
Chris, did we have letters on this one? Chris? No, no, no letters, and I don't see anyone on, in, on the Zoom call who would be a person in the audience speaking to this, other than Mr. Rosenbaum. So unless you want to say something, Mr. Rosenbaum.
I'm happy to keep my mouth shut. You're doing a great job.
You, you can tell he's an attorney, you know? When things look like they're going your way, keep your mouth shut.
Exactly.
Yeah, Jay and I had to talk earlier, so.
Okay, so then I, I don't have anyone in the audience who's going to speak to this. So Mick, what questions do you have?
I don't have any questions.
Manny?
I'm a little bit confused now about the height. If, and this is a question for Ben, I guess. If it's above the height right now, I mean, you're getting the permit now, so shouldn't we go by today, not tomorrow, after you put the fill in?
No, Manny, may I, may I, Sharon?
Sure.
Please.
Manny, I just went back and re-looked at the numbers on John's site plan. The house is at 28 feet. It's not above 28. But that calculation is from the old height, from the old average grade, not the new fill. So the fill is being put in only to make sure the basement's not a story, but we're measuring from the old existing grade for the height limit.
Okay, so.
You have to do.
So.
Yeah, we do.
Right, so the existing average grade?
Yes.
When I look at it, it seems to me like it's 1.4 below the height limit?
No.
It doesn't have a page?
Looking at the existing conditions plan. The average grade is, is, is 50.250.
Right.
Okay? That's on the, on the bottom right of the existing plan. Existing average grade is 50.2. That's, that's existing grade. If you go to the second plan, the proposed site plan, and you look at the maximum ridge height, I'm sorry, the proposed ridge height, it's at 78.2.
Yeah.
So if you take 78.2, and you subtract 50.2, you end up with 28 feet, Manny. You're, they're, they're compliant. They're right at 28 feet.
Yeah. I was just confused with their numbers here. Existing average grade, and they add the four corners.
Yep.
And that ends up being, the average grade would be 51.6. The maximum ridge height is 51.6 plus 28 feet is 79.6.
Yeah, we can't, but we, we can't use the 51.6, Manny, because that's, that 51.6 is after they bring the fill in. That's, that's the, the average comes up by about, oh, a little less than a foot. So the, the house is actually designed at 28 feet above the old average grade, which is on the first page, 50.2.
Okay.
Because we're not allowed to use that fill. We can use it for just, you know, making a basement not a story, but we can't use it to raise the roof height of the structure.
I got you. Right. Now I understand. Thank you.
Thanks, Manny.
Okay, Trevor?
That's all.
Um, Ben, it would have been helpful to have existing elevations, I mean, building elevations.
Yeah, you're absolutely right, Trevor. I noticed that. They're not there.
Because they are not here.
Yeah, they're not. I mean, I can certainly, I can certainly provide them if you want. It's, it will.
I mean, I think that would, if we were to continue this for any reason, that might be helpful, but otherwise, I think it's okay. I did, I had written down that I had questions about the building height, the existing grade, the fill, whether it's a three-story house. But I believe all those questions have been addressed, so at the moment, at the moment, I don't have any further questions.
Okay, Will?
No, I, I have no questions.
Jan?
I'm very puzzled about why you can put sand on one side of a house and all of a sudden say it's a two-story house, not a three-story house. I don't get that.
I'm happy to explain it if.
And it really seems like you're putting in a three-story house to me, and I'm listening to everybody talk about figures that I honestly don't understand, because I'm not a builder or an architect, but I don't get it.
May I share, may I, Sharon?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Building height and basement stories are two completely unrelated concepts. Building height under the code says you can build a house that's no more than 28 feet above the existing average grade before you disturb the grade. So that, you know, the engineer goes out and measures the towboat around the four corners of where the house is gonna be sited before you make any disturbance, and then you can't build the house that's more than 28 feet above that. So that's what we've done. The second concept has to do with when you build a house, you're, there's nothing in the zoning board that lets you, that prohibits you from moving fill around and changing grades on your property to build your house. And people do it all the time. They do hard scaping and they change grades. You can remove fill or add fill around your house as long as you have conservation commission approval. But if, when your project is done, under the zoning code, you know, a basement has to have, and here, I'll read the definition, and Jen, I know you've already read it. It says, "A basement shall be counted as a story for purposes of height measurement if the vertical distance between the ceiling and the average level of the adjoining ground is more than five feet." So that's an engineering calculation. But although you have to use the existing grade for measuring height, you can maneuver and manipulate the grade around your house to determine whether or not it's a basement or not. And the simplest example is you can dig a hole to put your house into, right? You know, you, you can dig a hole and drop your house into that hole. If you have more than, the average is more than five feet by the time you're done, it's more than five feet, it's counted as a story. So the reverse is that you can actually go in and put fill around your house to make sure that you don't qualify as a story.
Okay. It still looks like a three-story house to me.
On one side it will, and that's what walkout basements tend to make houses look like. You're right.
Right. Okay. All right, Rita?
I don't have any questions, I don't think. I was just concerned a little bit about the variance for the, on the flood zone. I think it's been answered.
Andy?
Yeah, I guess I'm gonna go back and try to follow up with Jan, because I'm still confused too, Ben. As I understand it, the fill is going to go in a very small portion on the north side of the house, correct?
Yes.
Not even the whole length of the, the, if you will, the first floor now, it's gonna be the basement.
Yes, that's true, Andy.
I mean, I don't know how you could do it.
It, it, it's an engineering calculation. I mean, it literally is.
All right, so let me stop and ask the question, because you were probably just about to answer it, but I will ask it so that I can understand this. That turns that, the, the existing first floor into a basement by simply covering that small portion of the quote-unquote existing first floor, or whatever it is?
Yeah. Yes, because the, the house before they make the alterations, that lowest level is covered around it at different heights of different parts of the lot. Meaning at one side, on the walkout side, it's completely exposed, and the other side, it's partially underground. So the engineer does a calculation, and they, and they calculate what the average level of the adjoining ground has to be so that it's less than five feet. And they do that calculation. And once they know exactly how much of that building can be exposed to meet that calculation, they can calculate how much fill you have to bring in at which points to make that calculation make the exposed area less than five feet average all the way around the building. It, it sounds like you're gaming the system.
Yeah.
No, 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 no.
It feels like it, but you're not.
I understand, and I, it's fine. I guess, you know, you can do it, but yeah, just seems like there's not, you're not, the applicant's not proposing to put enough fill in. What about on the south side? I mean, I remember, I mean, I walked all around the house, which scared me because I thought I was gonna fall.
We get blown away.
Braver man than I am.
Lovely, by the way, but, yeah, anyway.
All I can say.
I'm not putting any fill, wait, wait, let me finish.
I'm sorry.
Just, just for, are you putting any fill in on the south side?
No.
Okay, and the south side of the quote-unquote, whatever it is, basement first floor existing is therefore going to be fully exposed from
It is.
At the, at the present grade that it's in.
The, the south and the west sides are exposed.
Right. Okay, so I see it. So it's the, it's the east side that sinks down, so that's what gets you the percentage.
Exactly. Okay, yes, yes.
Okay.
Because essentially, it's a three-story house.
It is. Well.
Because, you know, you've got three, three stories of living space on that house.
Essentially, but here, I'll give you a counter argument. Essentially, when you go to build a new house on a level lot, and you dig, and you dig an eight-foot foundation, and you build a basement, you know, rec room and all that.
Right.
You're building a three-story house.
Right.
And you can elect how much of it you want to lift out of the ground, and if you lift enough of it out of the ground, it's a three-story house. So it's not how much space you get inside, it's how much of it is exposed.
How much is exposed, yeah.
And so, so the final comment I'll make is, look, we're not asking for a variance from that story requirement.
Right.
So, you know, the building inspector has to be, has to, it has to be confirmed by John Arrodi, the engineer, that we meet that metric, and, and, you know. We have to. We're not asking for relief from that, so.
Okay, I haven't finished. I uh
Sorry, Andy.
Okay.
No, no, it's okay. If you didn't know, I mean, or maybe you did. Maybe you're clairvoyant. So the second floor plan I'm looking at. And I'm a little confused about what's up, what's there? What's going to be there? I see what appeared to be three rooms and a bath.
Yes.
All right, so. Are we changing the number of bedrooms in this house?
We are not.
One, two, three. And this relocated bedroom. Is that on the second floor now?
It is.
And the game room is not a bedroom.
If you, again, these are these are board of health issues, but if you look at the rises between the loft and the game room, that that's a that's a case, that's a that's an opening. It's wide enough to ensure that there's not the requisite degree of privacy to afford a bedroom under under health regulations.
Yeah, I mean, I think I, as I recall, Bruce used to say, Drucker used to say, um, I'm an attorney, not a an architect. I can't read plans.
No, I mean.
Not exactly. That covers me. I'm an attorney, not an architect. I can't read plans. So it's a little unclear to me.
I always tell people, as an attorney, to make a really bad electrician. So um but but basically the requirement to get the building permit is that is that Emily Beebe has to review the floor plans to make sure that we're not exceeding the subject flow under the under the Title V system that's in the ground. So.
Emily Beebe?
Actually, it won't be Emily.
Thank you, man.
Ben's been to a lot of meetings this week.
I'm sorry. Hillary will will review the floor plan.
I have no other questions. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Mick, did you have anything else?
I I'm still confused along the lines of Jan, and I'm a painter. I can somewhat read plans. What I'm, I don't know if I'm struggling or just I don't quite get it is we essentially have a three-story building and you're going to change the grade to make it a two-story building. Is that how? It's so we can get it, so you can get around there because you're not allowed to have a three-story um house in Wellfleet.
Absolutely. Yeah, it it's Mick, it sounds like we're gaming the system. But we're not, you know, the bylaw says you count as a story if if the average, the average exposure of the building is more than five feet. So you can just like when you're building a new house, you can manipulate your grade any way you want to to make sure it's not a story. It's just, we're going back.
I just said I'm confused, and I I'm still confused, but like, maybe one of the other board members can clear it up a little better.
Well.
Well. Well.
Yeah, I mean, I guess Mike thought on the twenty eight foot, I assume, I mean, I I don't know because I wasn't around when twenty eight feet was adopted, but I assume that came from the fire department.
Bingo. The ladder could go.
Yeah, and so as long as, so I I don't get as hung up as some people do on twenty eight feet because it's really a safety issue. And so if if the fire department can get to the floors they need to get to, I don't really care whether it's a three-story building in 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 some other way, you know, as long as as long as as it's a safety issue and a tech and it technically complies with with the twenty eight foot. So I think, you know, I'd just like to keep track of what the underlying purpose of the of the of the bylaw is.
Manny?
Well, being a builder.
Thank you, Manny.
I've built I've built many houses with walkout basement.
Yep.
But you had to meet that criteria. You had to have that five foot of fill around, you know, it would have to be averaged. You could have more here, say, eight feet on one side and ten feet on the other, whatever, as long as it you got that percentage covered. And and I've built one up till last year, so. So, I mean, it's been done all the time.
Okay. Ben, you said that the Conservation Commission had a little trouble with the fill part. Did they? Did they in the end approve it?
No, they just, Sharon threw you to you. Um they wanted to make sure that the the local wetland bylaw allowed the placement of fill within the fifty-foot buffer zone under their own code and and, you know, so I had to brief the issue to the board and they accepted, they accepted that their code does allow bringing in and putting fill. And just so you know, it was only about four hundred and twenty-five cubic feet of fill, not yards, feet. You know, so it was, it's not a large amount of fill. And so what the requirement and those of you that were out there, you probably, if you look at the house in relation to the adjoining landforms, it's pretty clear that whoever built this house cut out the dune to build the house.
Right.
You know, they cut the dune out. So all Jay's doing really is is sort of recreating that slope of the dune on the north side of the house. He's just bringing back in what was taken out before to to, again, to meet the letter of the code. So they wanted to make sure that the code allowed them to grant that permission. Once they saw that that was okay, they were fine with the project, so.
I uh I appreciated your statement about the floodplain exemption because I stood on that deck and thought that the only way this place floods is in a tsunami.
Yeah.
So I I really had trouble trying to figure out why we were being asked for a floodplain exemption because you're gonna erode. I mean, the house is gonna fall into the bay eventually, but, you know, it ain't gonna flood.
Let's hope not.
Ben told me not to say anything, but Sharon, I hope you're right.
I hope we don't have a tsunami in the bay. We'll, all of the things we write about how we're gonna and the town is not gonna have a problem with the water will be moot.
Yeah.
So, okay, does anybody have anything else? Are you ready to go to findings?
I'll make a motion that we go to findings.
All right, I need a second.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, Mick?
Aye.
Jan?
Aye.
Manny?
Aye.
Trevor?
Aye.
Will?
Aye.
Okay, here here are the findings that I have for you. Um, this is an application for a special permit under Wellfleet zoning by law six point one five and Massachusetts general law C forty A S six to alter pre-existing non-conforming structure on an pre-existing non-conforming lot by adding a second floor. The applicant also seeks a floodplain exemption pursuant to Wellfleet zoning by law six point one four for proposed construction. The lot is in the R one district. The dwelling is entitled to treatment as a lawfully pre-existing non-conforming structure, having been in existence for at least ten years as provided for in Wellfleet zoning by law six eight point two point two. The existing non-conformities regarding the structure are inadequate lot area, seventeen thousand four hundred and twenty-four square feet, or thirty thousand is required. Intrusion into the front setback, two foot, six inches, where thirty feet is required, and intrusion into the side setback, twelve foot, twelve feet, nine inches, where twenty-five feet is required. The structure is non-conforming in regard to lot coverage. Um, the applicant proposes adding a second floor addition onto the existing one-story dwelling. The addition will be built on the existing footprint, and there will be no expansion of the footprint. There will be a volumetric increase. There will be no change in use. There will be no increase in use. The use conforms with the objectives of the R one district as stated in Wellfleet zoning by law three point two. There are no appearances or correspondence either for or against the project. The roads, drainage, and other public services are limited on Lieutenant Island but are adequate for this use. I refuse to write that the roads are adequate on Lieutenant Island. I will never write that the roads are. The project has received approval from the Conservation Commission. The alteration will not be more subs- uh more substantially detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing non-conforming structure. Um, after considering the district exec- objectives for this zoning district as provided for in Wellfleet zoning by law three point two and the relevant criteria set forth in Wellfleet zoning by law eight point four point two. The board finds that the benefits of the proposal will outweigh any adverse effects on the town and the vicinity. The board has found that pursuant to Wellfleet zoning by law eight point four point two point three scenic views from public ways and developed properties have been considerably treated and traditional public access to or along the shoreline has been maintained, although anyone who goes down the shoreline from that is risking their life. Um, I didn't add that in the findings. That was a parenthetical comment. Um and the standard, I guess I have to vote on that one before we go to the floodplain one. Okay, so I need a motion to accept the findings.
Don't move. I'll make a motion to accept the findings.
Okay, and I need a second. Will seconds. Um, all in favor, Janet?
Aye.
Mick?
Aye.
Manny?
Aye.
Will?
Aye.
Trevor?
Aye.
Hi, um and then we have to now, do I need a motion to go to this floodplain exemption or to just add these on?
I I just have.
You need a motion, right?
I think you need a motion, right?
Okay, so I need a motion to to grant the floodplain exemption.
Don't move.
A second?
Aye.
Um, okay, and um here are the exemption findings. The Conservation Commission has issued an order of conditions for the project. The proposed alteration will not result in increased flood heights, decreased flood storage capacity, additional threats to public safety, extraordinary public expense, cause fraud on or victimization of the public, or conflict with any existing local laws. The project will comply in all respects with the state building code, including the requirements of section seven four four point zero regarding flood zones. Um, movement to grant the floodplain, accept those findings, I guess?
Don't move.
Okay, second?
Okay.
The man is the second. Um, all in favor, Mick?
Aye.
Manny?
Yeah.
Jan?
Aye.
Will?
Aye.
And Trevor? Okay, and then I think we need a motion to grant the special permit.
I'll make a motion to grant the special permit.
Okay, and a second?
Aye.
Will.
Uh, Will's an aye. That was Will, Will.
That's a second. That's.
That's a second. Chris, Chris, Will was the second and all in favor, Mick?
Aye.
Manny?
Aye.
Janet?
Aye.
Trevor?
Aye.
And Will?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you all.
All right.
You can speak now, Jay.
Thank you guys very much. This is great. I I like hearing the discussion. I learned a lot. I really appreciate. This is good.
Look with the tsunami.
Yes.
Thanks, everybody.
Okay, thank you. Bye-bye. Blinding off now. All right, good night, good night, good night. All right, I think we are down to us. Now, question for you, Jonathan. Do I close this meeting and then open the executive session?
Uh, you can make a motion to enter into executive session. And I'm happy to provide or suggest a motion, but if you would like to give it a go.
You know, you go ahead.
You may, you may want to consider making a motion to enter into executive session pursuant to general laws, chapter thirty A, section twenty-one A three to just to discuss strategy with respect to Rispoli Ventures LLC versus the Wellfleet CBA and Mandel versus the Wellfleet CBA. And uh make the declaration that with respect to the litigation, if an open meeting, um, excuse me, the open meeting will have a detrimental effect on the litigation position of the board.
Thank you. So what he said is our motion. I need a second.
I'll second it.
Okay, and I probably need a voice roll call vote for this. Okay, and and this is gonna be everybody. So Trevor.
Hi. Can I interrupt one second?
Sure.
Who made the motion?
I did. Through Jonathan. It was Jonathan's words, but I moved.
Don't move.
Does that work for you, Christine? Does that work for? Does that work?
You could probably make it a lot simpler, you know, but uh
Christine, I I read from the the meeting notice, the meeting agenda.
Yes.
Under under thirty A, you're supposed to declare the section and the purpose for which you enter into the executive.
Right. I I got that part. Who who was seconding?
The second was Will.
Okay, you guys go a little fast on, I thought we had to close the public hearings and then enter into executive session. I I know we've been dealing a lot with executive sessions um in the Conservation Commission, and Amy Quizell is really adamant about that.
That's been my experience on the planning board, that we close the public session.
Yeah, I think I think the public hearings need to be closed.
Okay, so why don't we do that first? Um, but Chris, the other thing I'm concerned about is we're still recording.
Um.
So when you we close the public hearing, do we stop recording?
I was thinking of that myself. I I would want town council to advise us on that.
Right.
Because I can work with the girl who puts the YouTube up and tell her like the minute that she should stop that it won't be available and make it into two parts, but I'm not absolutely certain on that.
Do we, do do other boards have a a policy on how they've been doing it? I know.
Well, typically, we would have a separate ID for a an executive session. That's what we would normally do, but um Carolyn said just have it right after this hearing.
Sure.
I didn't do a separate um ID for this.
So I think you could do it the way that you just described and and cut off the or not publish the um the next executive session part, or you can shut the recording off. I I don't, I I think the the latter might save you the hassle, but I know I know that might increase your work, so um.
Well, I'm just wondering, does it would it affect anything with both of these appeals if 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 it were to go to court and they said, we want to see your executive session? I I don't know.
Well.
Title two. So I mean, I don't, I think we should shut the recording off, and I
Okay.
I'd urge the the rest of the board.
If they, if we were meeting in at the senior center, they wouldn't be able to see our meeting. They would only be able to see our minutes of it afterwards.
Right.
Okay.
Right.
I'm gonna end.
Okay, so I'm gonna, yeah, wait a minute. Let me make a motion to to close the the reg, the public hearing.
Second.
And Trevor seconds, and I need um a voice vote on that. Al, you get to vote this day. Nick?
Yeah.
Rifa?
Yes.
Trevor?
Aye.
Manny?
Aye.
Will?
Aye.
Andy?
Aye.
And Janet?
Aye, but I don't think Al can vote.
No, Al probably can't vote, so we won't count him. Hasn't been sworn in. That's right. Okay.
Nay.
Nay. Okay, but he can still stay. It's gonna affect him afterwards, so it's better that he stay. Okay, so the public hearing is closed. You can turn off the recording.